Meeting to order. If everybody will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Okay. Jill Maddick Nelson.
Here.
Kristen Matt Miller.
Here.
Scott Peterson.
Here.
Katherine Solan.
Here.
Angie Schreiber.
Here.
J.D. Schrader.
Here.
Dr. Bardot.
Here.
Bobby Braun.
Here.
And Danny Pye.
Here. Okay, I do want to make a privileged statement before we go to item number two. And that is, if you can look around, you can see that there are no administration present, with the exception of Mrs. Bornerman, because sickness has hit Door Street, and they are all sick and at home. Mrs. Oginski is on virtual tonight, so if we have questions of her, she'll be able to answer those questions. Okay? Item two, citizens and delegations. We have two brand-new student representatives tonight. We have Gracie Hall and Luke Bastel, and they are prepared to give a report tonight. But first, let's welcome them to the board. I told them they'll have their nameplates next month. Whoever wants to go first?
Okay. My name is Luke Bastel. I am a senior. I'm going to St. Louis, Missouri, to become a pharmacist. I currently play baseball and basketball. I wanted to be the Student School Board representative because I care about my high school community. First, I will be talking from this year. That this year to last year, the rules are being enforced, and it feels safer in our high school. People are being generally more respectful to each other. The swimming team is crushing school relay records right now. The lunchroom is cleaner and safer than ever. There's less garbage laying around. The best pizza so far is from North Star. Mr. Schofield is looking for someone to be Rocky Robin at upcoming events to bring back school pride.
Okay. I'm Gracie. I'm currently a junior this year. I'm interested in pediatric nursing. I'm currently an active member in Skills USA and Student Council. I wanted to be the Student School Board representative to help make school a safer place and better place for our students. Homecoming this week, it's going smooth this year, more structured than last year, for sure. There are clear rules about the float and the dance and expectations on what students need to do to make their float more presentable. The theme for homecoming this year is Antigo Pride and the War on 64, which is a new thing we started doing last year. We have dress-up days this week, including PJ Day, which was today, and then Anything But a Water Bottle Day, which is tomorrow. That should be exciting for the students. And then we have a Dress Like a Teacher Day on Wednesday, so that should be fun. And then Twin Day and Anything But a Backpack Day. That will also be interesting. These students are pretty creative with their ideas. But the parade is on Friday at 4:00 p.m., the game is at 7:00 p.m., and then the dance on Saturday is from 7:00 to 10:30.
All right. So Luke, if you have any questions about St. Louis, let me know. That's my home area.
Okay.
I'm glad to help you out there. Any board members have questions?
Just if they're here and it's the first day, I gotta ask them something. How do you like, how's the cellphone thing going?
Well, a lot of students have their own opinions about it, that's for sure. But I like not having a cellphone because I'm able to focus more on class and not what's going on on social media this year.
I genuinely don't use my cellphone during school, but I believe that it actually helps students in our community learn and get a better education. The phone is just too distracting when you're in a school day. I mean, it's just too easy to pick up and look at, so I like not having it.
If you had one rule you wanted to enforce more strict, what would it be?
Sorry about that. I was going for the head slap.
I don't know. I don't know if there's anything that we have to enforce more. The new principal, obviously, is doing a wonderful job at doing what the rules are enforced to be, and I feel like it's working out way better than it was the last three years being in this school.
Our dress code was enforced more this year than it has been the last couple of years, and I see a great change in what students are wearing, and I think it's, it definitely is less distracting to other students.
That's all great things to hear. It really is.
Any other questions or comments from the board members? No? Okay. Thank you so much, and like I said, we'll have your nameplates next month for you. Mrs. Bornerman, you have something you want to say?
Do you want them to stay for the meeting, or no?
I will leave that up to them. That's their choice if they want to stay. We would like for them to, but we know that the time has run a little late tonight.
Depends if there's any things on the agenda. So sometimes they maybe, sometimes don't.
It's a short, it's a short.
It's short, it's a short one. Okay.
I appreciate you guys coming, and you picked out some big highlights that are really helpful for the board to hear. And I'm just really excited to hear about the positive changes and things that are reinforced, being enforced. So thank you for sharing, thank you, Mrs. Bornerman, for all that you've done, that they've been able to share out as well.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to letter B, recognition. With this being the start of the new school year, we're just a couple of weeks into the year. At this time, the administration does not have any recognition, but we will have this on the agenda for next month and people to be recognized. Letter C, public comment. Is there anybody signed up there?
No.
Stretch my eyes. No?
No.
Number three, consent agenda. Approval of agenda, minutes, and financial reports, requests for overnight travel, and report of district new hires, district retirement and resignation report. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the agenda, minutes from the 9/9/24 Building and Grounds Committee, minutes from the 9/9/24, doesn't state the meeting on 9/9/24. Minutes from the 8/19/24 Board Meeting, Curriculum, Technology and Pupil Services Committee, District Retirement and Resignation Report, Report of District New Hires, Financial Reports for August and September 2024, Consideration of Current Bills, checks number 8250 to 8285 in the amount of $78,671.41. ACH is number 242500127 through 242500181 in the amount of $182,928.45. NYER transfers in the amount of $5,701.02 for a total of $267,388.08.
Motion's been made by Bobby. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I do. We need a correction to the minutes from the 9/9/24 meeting because the motion doesn't state what that is for.
That would be for the Curriculum, Technology and Pupil Services. We had two committees that met on 9/9. It was just Building and Grounds. I can see that's a typo error there.
Okay. And then a correction to the minutes from the August Board Meeting. There is no location, there's no roll call, there's no ending, there's no adjournment. And if you look at the format of those minutes, it's clearly not in its final prepared minutes for. And the reason I mention that is because those minutes are kept on record, and so they need to be accurate and corrected.
So those items will be noted and added to those minutes to be kept on file. Thank you for that catch.
They definitely need work.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the motion on the floor?
Question on those. Do I, do those minutes need to be removed and then come back for approval at the next meeting?
They will be corrected. We can approve them as they are read with the corrections being added, and then they can be presented to us at the next board meeting.
Okay, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Dr. Bardot?
I need to abstain on check number 8254, 8254. And if I missed any others of that company, I abstain on those also.
Any other questions or comments on the motion on the floor?
One more comment.
Yes, ma'am.
No disrespect to Deanna at all on the minutes. I think this was in the transition of.
Absolutely. Thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions or comments of the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. The voting device is now open. J.D., you want to give it another try? Would anyone like to change their vote? Vote is now closed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, administration reports. Letter number A, Director of Business Services. Like Mrs. Oginski does, you have the report in front of you. Are there any questions for the Business Services Report? Letter B, Director of Pupil Services and Special Education. Are there any questions for the Director of Pupil Services and Special Education Report? Letter C, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Are there any questions for the Director of Curriculum and Instructions Report? Letter D, Director of Building and Grounds. Are there any questions for the Director of Building and Grounds? Yes, ma'am.
I am wondering why we are moving forward with decisions about Schofield Stadium prior to the referendum. I feel like the referendum question and how that outcome would determine more specifically what we would do with Schofield Stadium, so I'm just questioning the timing of moving forward.
We're not moving forward.
No.
We're not.
The discussion was centered around the bleachers.
Right.
Get your mic up close to Angie.
And we don't have enough, community members are saying that we don't have enough bleachers for the games that are being held. So that, that's primarily where the discussion was centered around, I'm not sure.
We need to. On the sheet, it says that I'm going to hire Blue Design Group and point of beginning for $5,500 to assist in the district is planning for Schofield Stadium solution. Yes, that is the topic sheet. So why are we doing that before the referendum?
Because Schofield Stadium has nothing in the referendum question.
I understand.
The referendum question deals with three elementary schools, the middle school and the high school.
Correct.
And we have some donors that are asking us for our plan. So in order to keep those guys thinking about being donors, that was, they want to know that we're going to do something like that. And that, so we don't know even, we haven't even discussed thoroughly where we want to put it. People have opinions.
Right.
All that is out, all, all that's in the open.
Right, and I feel like the outcome of the referendum would, and I understand that no referendum dollars go towards Schofield Stadium, but the outcome of that question would greatly impact the decision-making about what happens and where we go forward. So I'm just wondering if this $5,500 is good use of, good use of money at this time, if that referendum outcome could greatly affect that, what happens next?
I think that the question Jake asked, is going to ask these people to do is give us all the options available with a referendum passing, without a referendum passing. I mean, I can't remember anymore of the discussion, sorry.
It's, I just am questioning the timing, that's all. It seems. Because we're not going to fix anything for this year, so I don't understand, right, so I don't understand why we don't put that off until the end of November.
Well.
We could break it back in November.
During the discussions, what Jake had said was, once the solution is found, then, then we can move on to the next steps. So that was his, his thought was if we got Blue Design Group involved and we got like, solution options, if you will, right, and then we could decide which way would be the best way to move forward, then we can start planning how to reach that goal. Whether that be, you know, private donors, whether they're writing for grants, stuff like that. But you're right, it's not tied to the referendum, and yes, you have a great point. And I, and I did ask about that, and it's not tied to the referendum. I don't remember specifically.
Trying to save some time there.
I don't remember specifically, but Jake had brought up that it was brought to the board for being attached to the referendum, and it was decided that we would not attach it because it would, I have too many things and add additional cost.
I think what Kristen's getting at is, should the referendum pass, we would know, like, there'd be planning involved around all that. It would be strategic. So the referendum's not tied to Schofield, but you would have an idea of what the traffic is going to be. Should it be relocated over here, parking, all of that could be put into consideration within the actual referendum, would be my thought. And/or if it does not pass, then looking at all, all the options in general.
Sure.
I'm, I'm. Clear it off till after the referendum.
Well, I will say this $5,500 is not an extra amount of money that's coming from the school budget, from the fund balance. This is actually coming from Jake's own department budget for him to take care of this, if that makes any sense.
It does, I just, it does, however, we don't have a building and grounds budget per se, so I'm not sure exactly where this is getting paid from. I did ask that, too. He's, his response was, I don't, he didn't know because he didn't have a budget for it, so.
Mrs. Oginski, do you have a statement you want to make on this?
So, is my understanding that the purpose in doing this is because it will take a little bit of time for point of beginning and Blue to come up with some options? That's, that's the thought, but I completely agree with the timing. And I also agree that the location and the routing of traffic will also play a big part in the location as well. So I'm not sure that I helped any, but that is my understanding that it will take a bit of time to get the options ended. And there were questions from the community around when are we going to do something and around Schofield Stadium seating, which I do know that there have been additional bleachers either ordered or already delivered for the home games.
So without this being a motion, can we just ask for clarity from Jake and maybe further discussion?
He can bring it back.
Right. It, I agree, the report says I will be moving forward, and that's concerning.
So, I did ask about that because I said, well, doesn't this have to go to the board? Because I thought that was a pretty substantial amount.
Right.
To be paid, you know, for, for this planning, and because it's under $10,000 is what I was told. It does not need to come to the board, so. Yeah, just wanted to say that.
So it's a valid question by a board member that needs to be addressed.
I also just want to point out that, you know, regarding the bleachers and stuff, we're not the only school district that is struggling with not having enough bleachers or bleachers at all. So, and while having, you know, everybody having adequate seating and stuff like that is, is, would be great, and we think we all want that, I don't know if we have that in our financial capacity.
For this year?
Yes.
Or not even next year?
Yes. So, I mean, that's, that's something that we're all, we are taking a look at because it does cost quite a bit of money to bring in, to rent these bleachers, bring them in. Yeah, so, just want to make everybody aware of that.
I had a meeting with Jake today concerning the referendum, but in, because of, we have a meeting with a representative of our community tomorrow morning. He and I, with this one person that has requested the two of us meet with him. Anyway, in our discussion about this meeting, I knew that Schofield Stadium was going to come up based on last Wednesday's meeting at the Senior Citizen Center that Scott, Mrs. Oginski and I were at. And, yeah, I know. Anyway. I need to go to work. I know, I know. But in my discussion with Jake today, I mean, bringing in all these bleachers, we're renting them, and, you know, we have junior high games, we have freshman games, we have JV games, and we have varsity games. We're probably talking close to $20,000 because we can't use the main stadium this year. That's an excess that probably wasn't planned on. But as the people that are the football people want these, and I understand that, you know, lots of people like to stand at football games, but lots of people want to be in, in sitting down. And so I know there's going to be extra bleachers here Friday, but I don't know how long they'll stay because every time we haven't, we're getting charged per event that they're here. And my take, this is me talking, on Schofield Stadium is, it basically comes down to two options. Do we bring it to the high school where locker rooms are going to be available for both teams? Currently, teams, many of the teams are coming to the high school, dressing at the high school, then going to the stadium, then coming back after the game, dressing back into their street clothes, and then going home. So they are using our facilities up here, so we will have that. And people on the opposing team at halftime, if they want, they could go to the locker room, especially as the, as we get into November. Obviously, it would be at the current soccer field. You'd have to reinstall goalposts, and we'd have to bring in ble, you know, come up with a plan for seating on both sides and lights. The other option is, and I'm not saying which option we should do. The other option is you excavate, I have trouble with that word. We excavate the current stands that are no good, which is obviously a cost. We have then to build bleachers, especially on that side and maybe on the other side, to make it a nice stadium. What would really be nice is that we already have food and a place for our kids to go into at halftime. We'd have to provide that up at here, some kind of food stand that would have to be built. And then the other part of it is that to really be, make it a nice facility, we should actually build a, a building for the opposing team to go into at halftime. Now, the question is, how much money is it going to take to move everything here? And then the other question is, what's it going to, how much money is it going to take to do that? Here's the other thing that, that I was told at the, and I think Scott, you even mentioned this to me. Schofield Stadium was a baseball field. That's how it started, and where the bleachers are, that was center, that was the center field stadium. And the lights are not made for, the setup is not for football. It's set up for baseball. Still is. And still, and that's my point. So you have to have new lights. Yeah, so, it might be the same. It might cost more to actually keep it at Schofield Stadium, but that's the kind of thing we're going to need going forward. And maybe that's why, and Jake and I did not discuss this part today, but, you know, maybe that, I didn't even know he was putting that forward to Blue Design. But at some point, the Gridiron Club needs to know what it's going to cost to move it and what it's going to cost to keep it. That will help the decision, and that's the thing that will ha, the school, I believe, will have to provide to the public. So that, the Gridiron Club and the public can help us make a good decision. But again, I agree, the decision needs to come after November, or that information. Because even, even if we said, yes, we're going to move it to here, we're still having football over there next year. We, we don't need. For sure. But, I mean, you said, I don't think you need bleachers on both sides. There's a lot of, Wittenberg. That's what, that's what I had built, was on one side. There's Stratford. All these new stadiums have really nice bleachers. They go way up. They have a press box. They don't all have bleachers on one side. The only thing I would disagree with you on is putting it inside the track. I say you take a ride to Amherst and see what they got. Simple, and only, at that time, it was three and a half million.
Danny?
So while this is great discussion.
We don't need to talk about that.
While this is great discussion, we're going to move on to the next item, please. Letter E, Director of IT, you have the report there. Are there any questions? Letter F, Superintendent's Report, you have her report there. Do you have any questions? Hearing no questions. Item number five, Board Action. Letter A, Second Reading Policy 5460, Graduation Requirements. I will be looking for a motion.
I move the Board of Education to approve the second reading of Policy 5460, Graduation Requirements as presented.
Motion's been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Second reading, so I have nothing further to add to it.
Are there any questions or comments on the motion on the floor of the second reading of Policy 5460, Graduation Requirements? Hearing no questions. The voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? Vote is now closed, and the motion passes. Letter B, Crisis Plan 2024, 2025. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the Board to approve the 2024, 2025 Unified School District of Antigo Crisis Plan as presented.
Motion's been made by Angie. Would you like to speak to your motion, please?
Yes, I just want to mention that the only thing that's been changed from the previous year is the names have been updated with the new staff that have come on board for the positions.
Any other questions or comments on the motion on the floor to approve the Antigo Crisis Plan? Hearing no questions or comments. The voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed, and the motion carries. Letter C, Report of Donations. I will be looking for a motion.
I move the Board to approve the following donations. $100 from Presshugow Bank to fulfill a backpack bill of need. $30,082.43 from the foundation of the Unified School District of Antigo for steam supplies. $1,200 from the Antigo Area Rock Foundation for AHS Hockey. $1,300 from Center Court Club, number 1964, class of, I'm not sure what that's supposed to mean. Boys' Huddle for Boys' Huddle Program. $1,300 for Center Court Club, number 1965, Girls' Huddle.
Must be their huddle number. Huddle is like a, a video thing where all the games are on. Which is go in and watch them.
The Girls' Huddle Program. Thank you.
So Tom is watching his team all on huddle.
Okay, motion's been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you for the donations from our community. It's much appreciated.
Any other questions or comments of the motion on the floor?
The motion usually.
I'm sorry.
The motion usually has the total, although the attachment has it. I'm just pointing that out.
And the total is thirty. About $33,982.43.
Yeah. Something like that.
Good job though, on your head. Okay, the.
Oh, I missed the hundred from Presshugow Bank.
Voting, the voting device is now open.
Well, come on.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Vote is now closed, and the motion carries. Thank you so much. Letter six, our number six, letter A, 19.85 sub 1, sub G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who has rendered oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved in. I will be looking for a motion. I will be looking for a motion. Motion's been made by Jill. Roll call, please.
Sorry about that. On here, Kristin Mattmiller.
Yes.
Scott Peterson. Catherine Solan.
Yes.
Angie Schreiber.
Yes.
Danny Schrader.
Yes.
Dr. Bardot.
Yes.
Bobby Braun.
Yes.
And Danny Pyett.
Yes. Okay, we're now in closed session.